All right, I will, because my, at the last meeting, it seemed like I was unstable. Um, I will call it order zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty four, seven P M. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of zoning board of appeals. You are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty eight, the general laws, the Commonwealth Massachusetts, and all amendments there, too, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held again on Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty four, at the times indicated. The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by methods. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. Real time access to zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed as only more appeals by utilizing this Zoom link or telephone number and entering the meeting ID provided. Uh, the Zoom link is H T T P colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash U S dot Zoom dot U S slash J slash eight five zero five two seven nine five two eight nine, or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight five zero five two seven nine five two eight nine. Applicants or representatives, individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. So they may be displayed for remote access viewing. This meeting will be replayed via channel, Xfinity Channel eight or high definition channel one zero seven two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel video on demand archives at the town of Barnstable's website. H T T P S colon slash slash streaming eighty five dot town of Barnstable dot U S slash cablecast public site slash question mark panel equal sign number one. Obviously, applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or by emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. So I will call the meeting to order with introduction of board members, Denise Johnson.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Present.
Um, Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
And I am Jacob Dewey, acting chair, Herb Bowdenseek and um Paul Pennard are absent. Um, moving on, notice of recording this meeting. Meeting is only board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's government access channel in accordance with M G L. Chapter thirty eight, section twenty must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting and please make their presence known. All right, seeing none, we don't have any minutes tonight.
Uh, chairman, I see a notice on top of my screen that says a meeting is being recorded, so. They don't all see that?
That's the town, Eric.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's, that's, click forever and then it'll go away.
I've never seen that before, that's all, thanks, sorry.
Um, all right, starting off with old business appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero one nine. Kevin Y. and Corey L. Vissant have applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash forty seven two accessory dwelling units A D Us. The applicants seek to remove and replace an existing uh existing accessory structure with a new accessory dwelling unit. The applicants also seek to modify a special permit number twenty twenty to allow further build out of the property for the accessory dwelling unit and additions to the principal dwelling. Subject property is located at three fifty eight Flint Street, Marston Mills, Massachusetts, as shown in assessors map one oh one as parcel one two one. It's located in the residence F R F zoning district. This was continued from August twenty third, twenty twenty three, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, December sixth, twenty twenty three, and January tenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, members assigned were myself, Jake Dewey, Aaron Webb, Herb Bowdenseek, Paul Pennard, and Denise Johnson. Uh, we did receive a letter from attorney Kareen uh to withdraw this without prejudice. Um, is attorney Kareen here to speak to this? I don't think so. Um, I will take a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice on appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero one nine.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second uh roll call vote. Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so that is withdrawn. Uh, moving on next um item, appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero three four Bay Ridge Realty LLC has applied for a comprehensive permit pursuant to M G L. Chapter forty B, section twenty, twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three. The applicant proposes to construct fourteen housing units, total of twenty four bedrooms within four detached buildings and associated parking and site improvements on three point nine five acres for rental purposes in accordance with M G L. Chapter forty B, seven, six, zero, C M R. The unit mix shall consist of six one bedroom units, six two bedroom units, and two three bedroom units. Four of the units will be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons. The subject property is located at nine hundred Old Sage Road, Central Massachusetts, as shown in assessors map one nine two as parcel zero zero one. It's located in the residency R C zoning district. This was continued from November eighth, twenty twenty three, and January tenth, twenty twenty four. Members assigned were her boat seek Paul Bernard, Aaron Webb, Mark Hanson, and Manny Alves. Uh, we did uh at late, late time here, receive a request from attorney Freeman to continue this through March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, based on um some comments and feedback from the the Board of Health on this item or the Health Department. Um, does anyone have any comments or discussion on that, or just want to make a motion to continue?
Did everybody read it?
Yeah, I did, yep.
So should we just continue?
Seems pretty substantial, but yeah, I think we should continue, yep.
Yep, okay, so I'll make a motion to continue um the appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero three four to March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, seven P M.
Second.
All right, roll call vote on the motion to continue, uh, Aaron Webb.
I am in favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
And I am also in favor, um, so that is continued to twenty to March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, next up, appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero four four, George and Deborah. Uh, sorry, uh, George and Deborah Allegria Allegro have applied for to modify special permit number twenty sixteen dash zero one eight modification number three to allow for the construction of a screen porch over an existing patio, which would increase the lot coverage from sixteen point two percent to eighteen point three percent. Subject property is located at two oh two Sea View Ave, Oslo, Massachusetts, as shown in assessors map one three eight and parcel zero one four, it's located in the R F zoning district. Uh, this was continued from January tenth, twenty twenty four. Um, we did receive a letter both on twenty twenty three zero four five and twenty twenty three dash zero four four from attorney Schultz, requesting to continue this to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four um to work out some discussion with Anna Butter. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments on that?
Haven't heard anything, so maybe uh I'll make a motion to continue to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, deal number twenty twenty three dash zero four four.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on the first one, uh Manny Alves.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, so now again, now we'll skip to appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero four five. Uh, George and Deborah Allegria Allegro have applied for such permit number two thousand sixteen dash zero one eight modification number three to allow the instruction of a screen porch over the existing patio, which would increase lot coverage from sixteen point two to eighteen point three percent. The subject property is located at two oh two Sea View Ave, Oslo, Massachusetts, as shown in assessors map one three eight as parcel zero one four. It's located in the R F one zoning district. Again, this was continued uh from January tenth. Uh, no members were assigned. We have a uh letter from attorney Schultz requesting you continue this to February twenty fourth, twenty twenty, uh, sorry, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Someone want to?
Motion to continue appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero four five, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, seven oh three P M.
Second, and a second. All right, roll call vote, Manny Alves.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, uh, so that is continued. Moving on to new business, um, and appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero four six, Mary Ellen and Anthony Prizzy have applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash forty seven two C, number four accessory dwelling units. The applicant seek to construct a nine hundred and sixty nine square foot one bedroom accessory dwelling unit, which exceeds the allowable size by sixty nine square feet. The subject property is located at three fifty four Wheeler Road, Marston Mills, Massachusetts, as shown in assessors map zero eight two as parcel zero one six, the property is located in the residence F R F zoning district. Um, so this will be our regular members, um, which is Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, myself, and then um I guess we'll have Larry. And Denise, are you okay sitting in this?
Sure.
All right. Um, Mr. Prizzy, are you here? Do you want to just unmute yourself and uh give us a summary and rationale for your project? Think you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Want to know why you're constructing this building?
Do you have a question for me?
If you, if you could just give us a quick summary of your project and why it needs nine square feet, that would be very helpful for us.
Okay, we're building a, we'd like to build a A D unit for uh actually for a friend who is also a handicapped, uh, having, she's diabetic, having lost a leg, and she uses a, a prosthesis. Um, and our idea is to provide her with this A D U unit uh on our property uh as we have two point nine two acres um and have the room for this A D U. And the problem is, it's just the sixty nine square feet over the uh nine hundred square feet. Um, usual plan. So we're looking for an appeal for that uh sixty nine square feet.
Okay, can you just give us a quick sort of summary of why it's sixty nine square feet over? Just is it the existing footprint of the building or, or it need to be bigger for any other reason than nine hundred?
Wheelchair.
Yeah.
Well, because we had to provide a wheelchair access, and that's where, that's where the sixty nine square feet, which is comes in, it's just the elongated uh sort of walkway kind of thing uh
On the entrance.
Uh, in the entrance um for the wheelchair.
To be able to turn the wheelchair around when she comes in.
Yeah, so she can turn her wheelchair around when she comes in uh to get into the rest remainder of the dwelling.
Okay, perfect, that's super helpful. Um, I think we understand the project, we did get um all of the documents, the plans, et cetera. Um, I will bring it back to the board to ask if anyone has any questions for the applicant.
What, uh, I do, thank you. Um, was, were the plans drawn specifically for, for handicap accessibility, or I'm just looking at, I'm looking at a half bath and a full bath, is that correct?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Um, and just looking at, looking at the half bath, is that just for guests?
Yes.
And the one that is, is that a, is that a roll in shower or something along that line?
Yes, yes, and uh it's big enough to turn a wheelchair around inside a five foot radius, so she can, because use her wheelchair in there.
Okay.
I have a, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Larry.
What is the interior square footage?
Uh.
Nine sixty nine.
Nine sixty nine.
Minus the stairwell.
Minus the stairwell.
Okay, so, so that ramp turned, she has to turn around and everything, that, isn't that on the exterior?
No, she comes up the ramp, opens the front door, and turns her wheelchair, rolls up the ramp, turns her wheelchair around in the entryway to get into.
Any other questions for board members? All right, seeing none, I will open for public comment. I don't believe we received anything, Anna, was there anything that we received remotely?
No, there isn't.
All right, anyone here to speak to this? If anyone like to speak, just unmute yourself and introduce your uh name and address for the record.
Yeah, hey Jake.
Yep.
Yeah, this is Paul.
Oh, hi, Paul.
Well, they won't let me into the meeting room, so uh I've been listening and evidently been muted, so I'm here at the meeting.
Okay.
Well, you can be, you'll be. Now that you're here.
Voice only.
That, that's, that's fine, yeah, we'll, we'll incorporate you in the, in the next uh next application. Uh, I did assign members on this without you here, if that's okay.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Um, all right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment on um this item, twenty twenty three dash zero four six.
Second.
Roll call vote on closing um public comment. Uh, Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Sorry, I'm in favor, sorry.
Uh, Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, uh, so that brings it back to the board for discussion. Um, does anyone have any thoughts or opinions on this they want to share or discussion amongst us?
I just thinks that the accommodation of the handicap uh resident is legitimate, and given the size of their lot, it's not like it's a budding into any of the neighbors or, you know, it, on some, on some of these A U Ds, it's been way out of proportion to the rest of the property, but this seems quite in proportion to the size of their lot, that to be able to have an extra sixty nine feet.
Anyone else, Mark, go ahead.
Just a quick question, I mean, I, I, I get where they're going with the extra half bath. How, how much does that extra half bath, it's just a question? How, how many square feet is that extra half bath? I see about four foot by.
Thirty five.
It's thirty five. Okay. And it has a walk-in closet, like, put it this way, if it didn't have a walk-in closet and it removed the half bath, could, could it accommodate the sixty nine square feet?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
Don't think, are you? Again, I, I see a closet that is uh about six and a half feet by six and a half feet, that's thirty, and then a, and then a bath, half bath, that's around thirty five.
Right.
So I'm wondering, is the, is the closet, is the walk-in closet and the half bath, is that creating the extra sixty nine square feet?
No, that's when you come in the front door so that she has the room she needs to turn her wheelchair around when she comes up the ramp through the front door.
You guys see where I'm going with this?
I do, Mark, yeah, I mean, I think the front edge of the property of the house, again, I can't, the laser fish is just, it's very difficult to see this stuff, I'm struggling here big time to come up with it, but um oh man. Yeah, I can't really deal with the laser fish at this point, so I'm kind of struggling here for the plans to get a sense of what's going on, but I think that front edge to the left of the front door, if you were coming into the building, is probably one foot deeper than it needs to be, so if that foot was removed, I don't know exactly dimensionally.
Three feet.
It's, it's three feet.
Three by twenty, three by twenty three.
Three by twenty three.
So that's causing this, that's, there's your sixty nine feet right there, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
To allow five feet for a wheelchair to move, to turn once it gets in the door.
No, I understand, I, nobody here does not appreciate that fact. I guess what my point is that Mark's trying to raise is if, if the half bath and maybe the walk-in closet were kind of maybe removed from the, from the A D U, would it then allow for extra, you know, the foyer space to then stretch into that half bath area, maybe? I guess, Mark, I don't want to speak for you, Mark, but um and then, you know, you wouldn't need that extra three feet in the front.
Well.
We just, we, go ahead.
Who go ahead?
Please go ahead, sure, yeah.
Well, that's for guests, if she has guests, and the closet, she needs a closet. I mean, you know, she also.
I get it, yeah. We struggle with these things quite a bit, as you know, because of the, you know, the way it was designed was for nine hundred square feet, and so I personally feel like, again, I'm not, not, not in favor of it. I just, sixty nine square feet doesn't seem like it would be a make or break type. You get it to nine hundred, that's, that's really my point, I, I, you know, where it fits within the, you know, you wouldn't even need to be here if you were right at nine hundred square feet. So is there a way on the plans to find nine, you know, sixty nine square feet that wouldn't impact the quality of life for the tenant you're designing this for?
Well, I assume someone in a wheelchair needs a, a bigger closet to get to their clothing than someone who's just on foot.
Exactly, so we, it'd be a real hardship for us to make a closet smaller for her and.
I think it would be hard for her if she was her wheelchair.
Yes, it's not a hardship for us, it's a hardship for her.
What's the length of the back wall of the house, proposed A D U?
Thirty six feet.
Thirty six feet.
So if you brought that in two feet, you would then be at seventy two and wouldn't be here in front of us. I'm just, again, I'm throwing out some different options, that's all, I, I, I don't, Mark, am I following along what you're talking about?
Yeah, to a certain degree, I mean, this is a brand new structure, correct? This is not on an existing footprint, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this just really comes down to design, there is a closet in the bedroom that could be uh that would, for somebody who is actually impaired, would be, make more sense to have, you know, two open doors, it, so it has a regular closet, it has a walk-in closet, it has a half bath, which in nine hundred square feet is a nice to have, but I believe that honestly, it, it could have been designed, were they told that it was to be, did they know the square footage when they went to do the initial design? Does the limitations?
I think so, you know, one of those uh, one of those closets is going to be a stackable washer and dryer for her as well. So that eliminates a closet, because that's, one of them's going to have a stackable washer and dryer for her.
I see, maybe in the living room or something like that, but you see where I'm going with this, is that, you know, we have the limits of it, and where, where we usually bend on these is, is if we're working with an existing footprint that can't be reduced, say you were going to do a second floor or something, but when you have a, when you have a brand new structure, uh, it can be designed in a way that.
Like.
Into compliance, that's just a thought.
Well, our builder has this exact same house. We're just using his, his plans.
Okay, so.
And, you know, it's, you know, she's in a wheelchair, I, I, I don't know, she um, you know, I'm just trying to do the right thing here, I, I don't know.
No, hundred percent, I mean, we, we totally understand where you're, where you're trying to go with it. Um, if it were redesigned, you don't even need to be in front of us.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I don't know how she's going to get in that front door if it's, doesn't have that extra footage.
Again, this is a brand new design, it can be designed in a way that there can be access. She won't even be using this half bath, I, I mean, at two feet, it's showing the door. I mean, granted, it could be bigger, but there's just no way, you know, I understand it's for guests, but certainly there could be potentially, uh, I'm just saying, is there a possibility that it can be reworked so that you don't have to have the sixty nine square feet, that's all.
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I just don't see how it would work, I don't know how she'd get around the kitchen here in the wheelchair if it was in, you know, sixty nine feet in. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt here, but we approved an A D U on your property, am I correct? You guys have been, you've been in front of us before?
Me?
No, I have.
No, Dean Stanley has.
Oh, Dean Stanley has, yeah, and these are the, these are the plans for that particular A D U that we approved?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I mean, we're yeah, I, you know, you guys are putting us in a tough spot here, you're presenting us with plans for an A D U that we approved for a different property. It's not even, I mean, I understand the plans are, you know, sixty nine feet over, but it's not even the plans for the property, you know, it's, it's a, I don't know, man, I, I'm, I feel like.
This property is larger than the one you.
I under, I understand that, it's not about property sizes, it has nothing to do with the A D U, you know, sort of restrictions and or approval process, the property size necessarily, it has to do with the plans. These plans were for an A D U that we approved back in twenty twenty two, if I'm correct, if I remember, for Dean Stanley's property, so I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm wrestling, I, I, I think.
They did, you did approve them for him, and when I saw it, when I actually saw the plans and I saw that she had the five foot radius that she needs for a wheelchair, it worked, um.
Was that an existing dwelling? I don't remember this, this previous one.
No.
No, 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 it was not, no, it's brand new.
So has this been modified from the original plan?
No.
No.
Same one, exact same plan.
I mean, Mark, here, the, the previous, you know, plans are sort of irrelevant, we have to stand on this alone. Um, but.
Well, I agree, I, Jake, I agree, yeah, this was presented to us already once for a previous application, so.
Well, I, I don't think it's that big a variance, and I, I think it also, if they, they um have to get another tenant at some point in time, there's very little housing that is going to be affordable that al- already is equipped for handicap people. So in a way, I, I, I don't see, think that this is conflicting with any of the intent to have an extra footage because of the handicap um parameters that have been addressed, getting in, getting into closets, being able to have a kitchen where you can wheel around. Um, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with it.
So I guess I would go back to Ms. Prizzy, would you be comfortable with the condition that this unit is always rented to someone with a handicap disability in perpetuity?
Absolutely, and she will live it until she dies.
Anna, is that something we could condition?
Absolutely, until she dies, absolutely.
I would, I, it would be in perpetuity to the structure, because this is a structure, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be connected to the, the occupant or the tenant. It would be in, in perpetuity to the structure, to, to Ms. Johnson's point.
I'm not sure what you mean there.
That if, if this tenant is no longer uh using the property, if, if, for whatever reason, that you would again rent it to someone else who, who needs the extra capabilities for their handicap.
Yes.
And, and future owners would be held to that same restriction of the parcel.
How would you know? I mean, I, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know. I mean, what happens if we wanted to move into it after? Let's say she passes away and we decide to move into it, I mean, we're not, well, my husband walks with a cane, um.
I mean, I'd hate to think this is going to be restricted to a handicap person.
Can't be.
Well, I, I get it, goes back to um Mr. Hanson and Mr. Webb's point of, it seems like it could be built to nine hundred square feet and everything could be fit in with nine hundred square feet, it's sixty nine feet of, of, of variance from the bylaw here. Um, it seems like something could be made a little bit smaller inside that structure. Of, of variance from the bylaw here. Um, it seems like something could be made a little bit smaller inside that structure. Um, or something could be created as not living space and, and you could comply and do this by right. So we're trying to find a, a reason to stand on of why we're allowing this to be, be larger. You know, our, our town council created this bylaw with a very specific number of nine hundred square feet. Um, and so we're trying to, you know, find very specific reasons why we would allow it to be anything more than that.
Well. Specific reason. I don't know, I don't have a specific, I don't. Have a specific reason here where he came up with this IDU, ADU thing for, for this lady. And it turns out that it's. Sixty-nine square feet, a little larger than nine hundred square feet, of course. Mainly because of the entryway and, uh, wheelchair access. Now, if it's. You're saying that if this should be restricted always to a handicap. Wheelchair-type person. I don't know, I suppose, uh. Suppose that could be done, you know, I, if you need a specific reason.
Well, this is Paul. I know I'm not. I'm allowed to ask questions, but I'm not.
For sure.
A voting at this point. How many bedrooms does this proposed ADU have?
One.
So the. Nine hundred square feet proposes two bedrooms and a bath, so.
It does not.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. That's where the nine hundred square feet came from, so.
He's saying that the, the bylaw.
The bylaw, the bylaw.
Allows for two-bedroom, one bath.
To me, this easily can be redesigned, and I don't know what all discussion is. I think you needed to, to have something designed for a wheelchair for nine hundred square feet. I think that could be pretty easily done. That's the end of my comments.
It could.
Thank, thank you, Paul. All right, so does any board members want to make findings in one direction here, or is there continued discussion?
Mr. Chair, could you, um, close the public hearing, please?
Yes. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. I need a second. Um, and voting members on this roll call vote, Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Uh, Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And I am also in favor, so that closes the public hearing. And brings it back to us, to someone to just make findings, one way or the other on this item.
Do they have the opportunity to, what, what would they have to do in order to have this, you know, bring this back forth, um, with a redesign? Do they have to repetition?
Well, if they went to nine hundred square feet, it would be by rights. They wouldn't need. So if we did, if we denied it, they would have to go back to nine hundred square feet.
Or the other option is to withdraw.
But they would have to redo the whole site plan and.
Uh, sorry, ma'am, the public hearing's closed on this, so we can't hear anything else from you at this time. We just have to take a vote.
Can't hear it.
I know.
It's my opinion that this is, this was not designed to be wheelchair accessible. And that this is.
It was modified.
Of an existing plan, uh, and that I think the. I think the half-bath and the walk-in closet, um. Especially the way it's drawn, it's just, it. Somebody handicapped, it's just, it just doesn't make sense. I think it could be redrawn and have them do it by right.
Yeah, I mean, I think nine hundred square feet can definitely accommodate a one-bedroom handicap-accessible ADU pretty comfortably. You know, again, it's not coming from a. Garage or converting an existing garage, and that was the square feet that happened to be of that footprint.
Correct.
I think it would be more, or if they had to add a little bump out to accommodate a covered ramp or something of that nature, and it's like, hey. We need another sixty-nine square feet to accommodate that. That would make sense, but this is ground-up construction. I think there's probably plans out there well under nine hundred square feet. That it can accommodate, uh, a, a wheelchair-accessible one-bedroom.
I agree.
I concur.
Denise, how are you feeling on this one?
Well, I, I mean, I just. I guess I, I've seen these handicap homes, and I know that they do take up a lot of space, even the doorways and things like that, so. Um, I mean, if we want to be. Stick to our guns that we're always going to have this nine hundred feet, because we have had a couple we've turned away that have been substantially larger. But if that's the feeling of the group, uh, that's fine.
Yeah, I just look back at, you know, at, at town council, that they, they did draw a line there for a reason. These are really supposed to be strong outliers. Or with strong reasons why it couldn't accommodate within. Um, and it just seems like. You know, going through this, this one could accommodate, like, there's, there's, you know. If they needed two bedrooms and it got really tight and, and things of that nature, maybe it would be like, okay, we need. In situation, I, I just. Don't see a scene to go over. Uh, Larry, did you have any comments or thoughts?
Uh, it seems like, uh, nine hundred square feet can accommodate the use.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, I don't know building code totally well enough, but I, I think they could even make an interior space. Not living space with mechanical room or something of that nature and even knock off sixty-nine square feet. Uh, if they wanted to. Um, does someone want to make findings on this?
I will try. Give me a second.
So Anna, make sure, make sure we do this right, Anna. So we need to, um. Make a motion. To approve with negative findings. If we're going, if we're not approving it.
You could read the positive findings and then vote. The way up, up or down the, the positive findings. But the, I, I want the applicant to know that they have the option to withdraw.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot the applicant's first name or last name.
Ms. Prizzy, Barry Allen Prizzy.
Mr. Prizzy, you understand that most likely this is not going to turn in your favor, so you do have the right to withdraw your application. Without prejudice, meaning you can come back if you need to, um. You know, if the, however, but if we do deny it, you are then with a, you know, denied, um. Special permit, is that what you're playing for? Um, yeah, special permit, which then requires some time to. Come back before us, so. Do you understand that? You gotta unmute your computer there, Mr. Prizzy.
Okay, uh.
If what?
If you was.
Would modify it. So if I withdraw, we just modified, is that what happens?
If you, yeah, if you, basically what would happen was you could withdraw right now without prejudice. We would take a vote on it, which I think we would agree. And then you can then redesign and get it to nine hundred square feet, and you don't, and then present your plans to the building department, and you're free to go at that point. You wouldn't even come back before us, so, uh, Anna, what's the, what, what does it mean if they, if they, if we deny it? Does, do they have to wait a certain period of time before they can even go to building again, or?
They're, well, if they, if they want to go forward with the application as is. And the board denies it, they have a two-year waiting period. They, they can't, they can't come back to the board for two years.
It makes sense for you to withdraw, just to save all your, keep all your cards close to your vest.
All right, we'll withdraw without prejudice.
All right, should I make a motion?
Anna, do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to allow the applicant on appeal number two oh two-three dash oh four six, Prizzy. To withdraw their application for special permit. Dated, uh, to, 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 January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, on staff report dated twenty, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
All, all right, so we have a motion to appeal number, to withdraw, appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero four six. And we have a second roll call vote on the withdrawal of the, um, application. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
Denise Johnson.
Favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, so Ms. Prizzy, the application is withdrawn. If you do decide to build something over nine hundred square feet, you would come back to us. Um, with your new plans. Um, if not, you can potentially, um, have per, direct permitting with the building department.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming for us tonight. Uh, moving on to appeal number, uh, twenty twenty-three dash. Kid, oh, okay, yep, thank you. Uh, appeal number, um, twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, Michael and Barbara. Girardi have applied for special permit in accordance with section two forty dash ninety-two B, non-conforming buildings or structures used as single-family residency. Applicants seek to alter and expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure by constructing an attached garage. Partially enclosed and expanding existing rear-facing deck. And to construct in addition, the subject property is located two hundred Indian, Indian Hill Road. Barnstable, Massachusetts, as shown on a Sussers map, three-three-six is parcel zero-six-zero. The property is located in the residence. F-one, RF-one zoning district. Um, so sitting on that will be our regular members. Uh, Mark Hanson, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, um, and Manny, are you good to sit on this one?
Maybe he's muted.
Are you there?
Yes, yep, sorry, I was muted.
Okay, Manny and myself. Um, so Attorney Rose, uh, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Marion Rose from Singer and Singer in Dennisport. Happy to be with you all tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Girardis, Michael and Barbara, uh, for our special permit request for their home at two hundred Indian Hill. In Barnstable Village. Their home is in the RF-one zoning district, and we are asking for a special permit under two forty ninety-two B. To add four modest additions to the existing single-family dwelling. Um, it would help if I could ask. Can someone pull up the site plan? So I can orient you all.
Sure, one moment.
Are you able to do that?
And if not, I can refer to it.
No, my, my computer is just a little bit slow, but just, I've got it. I've got it.
Thank you, thank you.
Share my screen. Can everybody? See that?
That ours up anyway.
Yep.
Great.
There you go.
Perfect. I just wanted to reference this briefly, um, to show, uh, where the pre-existing, um, areas are. It's pre-existing non-conforming as to size. It's a little over fifteen thousand square feet, where forty-three hundred, three hundred and. Sorry, five hundred and sixty square feet is required. It's pre-existing non-conforming as to width. It's about a hundred and five feet wide, where it should be, um, or. To be conforming, it would be a hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, but mainly it's non-conforming as to both side setbacks. Uh, the side setbacks are fifteen feet in this zoning district. And on the left-hand or northern side, it's ten point two. And, or sorry, nine point eight feet existing, and. On the southern side, it's not, sorry, ten point two on the northern side and nine point eight on the, um, southern side. And so I want to make clear here, you can see this is a combined existing and proposed site plan. And so you can see where the proposed changes are going to be, and if Anna has the patience, I'd like to show that on the floor plans as well. But, um, the proposed changes are the following. On the southern side, there's an addition. Um, it is going to be further away from that setback than the existing dwelling. It'll be about ten point. Five feet away from the setback. And on the northern side, um, there's going to be. A proposed garage addition. On the front side of the house, and that will be eleven point one feet away. From that northern side setback, where the existing side setback is ten point two. In addition, there's also going to be an enclosure of the existing rear deck and slightly pushing out. Um, that rear deck, um, so the addition is a little bit bigger than the existing rear deck. In terms of going back towards the, um, east, and there'll be a covered front porch. Great, thank you. So this is the proposed. Conditioned floor plan. Um, the existing house is, as I said, a nineteen sixty-eight ranch. It has three qualifying bedrooms and one bath. The plan here is to keep the bedrooms the same, the bedroom count the same. But to have a better functioning bedroom and to add a master bath. Um, so on the, what you're seeing here, the left-hand side, is that bump out to the rear yard. And it's pretty modest. It's about. It's sixteen by fifteen, so about two hundred and forty square feet. And if you're looking, um, below that, you can see that one of the bedrooms has been changed into a master bath, but within the footprint. And if you go towards the center of the structure, you can see that there's a sunroom. That's the portion I was talking about that's going to be over the existing deck. Um, it's about four feet further out than the existing deck, and the existing deck has been increased in size as well. And if you go over to the left-hand side, you'll see, I'm sorry, to the right-hand side on this. You'll see, um. That there is an existing one-car garage. Um, it's now, as proposed, going to be a mudroom. And so part of that would be added to a new one-car garage. And there'd be square footage rise about an increase of twenty, two hundred and twenty-four feet, sixteen by fourteen there. If we could go to. I wanted to show you the elevations to show that from the outside, the changes are fairly minimal. Um, we could just pop on EX two first, the existing. And those are, yeah, you have to kind of go down a couple of pages. They're all in one doc. There we go. So that's the existing house. Ranch from nineteen sixty-eight. And if you go to the next, which is, um. Eighty. You can see the changes fairly minimal. Uh, there used to be a front door on the right-hand side. Now the front door is over to the left, closer to the garage. That's a covered area there. Um, and the, the door frame, the garage doors are slightly different as well. In the back, you can see the addition, which is the sunroom and that fire by the chimney, and you see the addition of the bedroom. But that's, that's all we're talking about. Thank you. So. Under the Barnstable zoning ordinance. In order to complete the redevelopment, the applicant is seeking a special permit from you all in accordance with two forty ninety-two B. The board's authorized to grant such a special permit after making a finding that the proposed alteration or expansion. Will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. We believe that it won't be for the following reasons. There's no change to the permitted single-use residential use, uh, single-family residential use of the property. The pre-existing non-conforming side setbacks will not grow larger. In fact, the additions will be less than. The existing non-conforming setbacks. The building height will remain the same. It's still a one. Um, story home. The roofline, other than the additions, is not changing. The number of bedrooms, three, will remain the same. We believe the proposal is in keeping and compatible with the neighborhood. We believe that there'll be no change or negative impact on the existing traffic flow. Utilities on the site will not change. There'll be no negative change anticipated in artificial light, noise, litter, or odor. And we don't believe this project will create a nuisance. For these reasons, we'd ask that you all grant a special permit based on the site plans. And the plans provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Rose. Um. Does anyone from the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just very quickly, um, I can't tell by the site plan, does the, does the rear of the property have any wetland, or is that, is that?
It does not.
Fifty or a hundred?
No.
Okay, and direct to each side? Are there, are there homes on each side of this property?
There are homes on each side of this property, yes.
Okay, and has there been any interaction with the neighbors as far as any type of, you know, additional construction or concerns about views or anything like that?
I, um, actually, I, I know that Michael is on the call and he can speak to that, but I know that he's reached out. We weren't able to get letters, but he also did not hear that there are any problems with it. Um, so, but he could speak to that if you'd like to hear him directly.
It's fine, I was just curious, thank you.
Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, a question, I, I had, um. Is a deck part of Lot Cockbridge? That's a question to Anna or anybody.
Well, the definition of lot coverage is structure. And I only-
A pool is considered part of lot coverage, so is a deck part of lot coverage or not, is my question.
They are, it's, um, patios would not be, they're considered landscaping features.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Deck would be.
A deck would be, deck, deck is part of a structure, it's a permanent structure attached to the house.
Okay, then, my concern with this is lot coverage. It exceeds lot coverage, and if you remove the new deck, uh, would that bring it within specs?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
Uh, if you removed the new deck, proposed new deck, would that bring it within the required lot coverage of twenty percent?
I'd have to do those calculations, um, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look at it and see. I've got.
Is it twenty percent or is it thirty?
Mr. Penner, I have to, um, do those calculations and I don't have that, um, in front of me. If you wanted, if we, if that's something that's necessary, I, I could make those calculations.
Yeah, concerned because the proposed additions, uh, the four additions on this, uh, exceed the lot coverage. Um, and so, you know, I'm concerned.
Yeah, it doesn't- Okay, Attorney Rose, we give you-
I thought that the twenty percent limit on coverage counted if it was a raise and replace, but not if it was an addition. Um, so that's, I thought, under ninety-two B, then there wasn't a twenty percent coverage limitation for this. Because it's not a raise and replace, it's an addition here.
Anna?
Yep, um, Attorney Rose is correct.
Is correct, wow, what, what?
But, but the, but the, yeah, go ahead, Anna.
If you look at the staff report, um, those, that was taken directly from the ordinance. There's a different set of findings and conditions depending on what section, uh, two forty ninety-two you're applying for.
Well, my question is, lot coverage requirements, twenty percent or thirty percent?
Not under this.
Not under this. There's not a limit.
The only thing that would apply, though, is on two, on two forty ninety-two B, it, you know, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? And if the neighborhood has those restrictions, I think we could go either way on that, Paul. I think to your point, like, you know, is that more detrimental to the neighborhood to have one lot that has more coverage than what the zoning allows there? But it doesn't specifically say they have to meet a lot coverage requirement.
Well, okay, so.
And I would say, I would say that because the additions that are being done are primarily in the rear of the property and they are all no closer to the sidelines than the existing structure. The only addition that's on the front of the prop, or the only, there are two additions on the front of the property. A s- partial pop-out of the one-car garage and the closed front porch or the covered front porch, um, are really landing, that's it. And if, when you look at the elevations, it doesn't seem like that is something that would be detrimental to the neighborhood. It's in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, the houses around this are comparable, some are larger. And so I, I think that this is in keeping with the neighborhood's character.
We, we've had, uh, a case, uh, cases before where we have not approved for a swimming pool in the back because it exceeded lot coverage. So I don't see this, uh, quite frankly, any different. Um, so I'm curious, if the proposed deck were removed, would it then meet lot coverage? Which would be one solution to it. So I guess I'm concerned about the lot coverage, which would, to me, would be density, and I think this detrimental to the neighborhood.
In terms of how the, if I could speak, um,
Yeah, go ahead.
How the, the ordinance was, was framed, if, I think there's a distinction between raising, replacing a structure and making additions to a structure. And if the town had wanted to specifically say that there's a twenty percent lot coverage limit for additions and renovations, that should be expressly, to my thinking, should be expressly in the bylaw. I do agree that if you think that tipping over to twenty percent is automatically, um, detrimental to the neighborhood, I, I think that that should be in the bylaw. And I think that if you're considering what is detrimental to the neighborhood, you should look at this, I'm hoping, this specific plan and see what these additions are, where they're placed. And that, rather than putting a two-story structure here, which would be, you know, on the same footprint, there are limited additions here, not adding bedrooms, not getting closer even at the same level as the side setback encroachments. And so I think that that's carefully planned, and I don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, I go back to my original question, is lot coverage requirements twenty percent or thirty percent? So Anna, which is it, twenty or thirty percent? It's gotta be one or the other.
No.
No, it's not, um, part of this section of the ordinance, it's part of another section of the ordinance.
But I guess, Anna, maybe he's asking in F-one or in RF-one, what is the requirement, the requirements? Twenty percent in RF-one? Hold up.
While she's doing that, Paul, I think-
There is no lot coverage requirement in RF-
There's no-
Right, right. Like, the, the provision that, that, that applies to nonconforming structures and alterations to nonconforming structures, um, yeah, that require a, 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 a special permit, Paul, unfortunately, and, and, and I, I understand what Attorney Rose is saying, does not contain a requirement that the proposed additions specifically comply with the lot coverage ratios. It, it, it's more quantitative because it falls back into the, 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 um, the general, uh, uh, special permit standard of whether or not it substantially find it to be more detrimental to the neighborhood. But what I think I'm hearing you say, Paul, is you'd think that if, in fact, it, it's, it is exceeding that lot coverage, you would find it to be detrimental.
Yeah, the only reason I bring it up is because I believe the application and/or the staff report, I read, I, I can't bring it up by computer, but somewhere read that the lot coverage was twenty percent and that prior to the alterations, it was less than that. And after the proposed alterations, it was more than that. And so I, I, I'm really looking for clarification of that. And, and yeah, I think it's a cramped lot, um, but I will, I will, I will, uh, you know, defer to, I mean, that's a lot to put on there. I mean, you're taking a whole garage and making it a mudroom. Okay, um, you're taking a patio and making it a three-season porch. And you're putting a huge deck in there. That's a lot of additional lot coverage. And so that's, I guess that's my concern. I, I don't have pictures of the neighborhood, I'm not there to, to have, I didn't do a site plan, a site, uh, visit, so I don't know.
Any other board members have any other questions for the applicant before we open a public comment?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there was an existing deck there, correct?
Um, no, the existing deck is under the footprint of the sunroom.
Correct.
And this deck is larger than the existing one?
This deck is larger than the existing deck.
By how much?
Michael, could you speak to that? Michael is here.
I'd have to, let's see, you'd have to look at the existing.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Uh, yes, hi, my name is Michael Girardi, I'm, I'm the owner of two hundred Indian Hill and the, uh, applicant along with Marion here.
Thank you.
Um, so what did I get, the same size of the deck? It's just short of the sun, of the sunroom. Be a quick answer.
I can explain, uh, the existing deck is sixteen by fourteen. And the proposed sunroom would be eighteen by fourteen. And then to the, um, left, towards the garage, that would be new proposed deck. That's what you see as proposed deck in the site plan. So if you're looking at the site plan, there is a little line under, um,
That's right.
where the sunroom is, and that shows where the existing deck is, and then it bumps out about four more feet. So there's about, I have to get my ruler out to tell you how much larger the proposed deck is. If that's necessary.
Well, I'm listening to Paul and I wonder if, um, the deck stayed at the original size, if, if that would help the situation. Any ideas?
Attorney Rose, would this be by right if you didn't have the deck at that size? I don't think so.
No. No, it wouldn't be by right.
No.
I don't- Besides that back problems or issues of that.
Yeah, they still would be here before us, whether, whether or not.
Yeah, I was wondering if, if it, uh, helped the coverage problem that we're, we're considering.
Again, I push back on the coverage prob, like, because there's not a coverage limit under ninety-two B. There is under ninety-two H, or is it ninety-three H? There's a coverage, and that's for the raise and replace, but there's not one for ninety-two B. I do think if you look at where these additions are being done and the scope of, um, the fact that this is not tearing down a house and adding a second floor, it's, which they could do, or if they stayed under the, they could stay in that same footprint and do that, um, and stay under the twenty percent that would then be applied. I think this is a modest proposal. Particularly if you look at the elevations.
Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with the attorney in, in terms of the proposal here. I don't find these to be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I guess, I don't, I just don't see in the materials anywhere where the lot coverage percentage is laid out. So, and again, it doesn't apply ultimately to what the, you know, in this case, unless you want to determine that lot coverage percentage over the allotted twenty percent with a raising and, and, and new structure is detrimental, I guess. So again, I don't, I, I don't really know what we're discussing here, because it just doesn't necessarily apply. Unless we feel like it's, these additions are detrimental to the neighborhood, and I don't see how they are.
Does anyone have any questions for, we'll have to discuss on this, but-
Yeah, I, I'm reading the summary of reasoning. Uh, if I can get it here.
And I did notice that I have twenty percent in there, I did include the percentages. Um, and I did misspeak as to the twenty percent there. I mean, it, I wanted to provide you with percentages to show what the increase is. But, um, it is not true that twenty percent is the limit, um, for this renovation. But the numbers in terms of square footage are correct in there.
Well,
It's on the first page.
The statement, the statement says, the existing dwelling is conforming as to lot coverage, fifteen point two percent existing, or twenty percent is allowed. That's why I raised my question.
I, I hear you, and that's my fault, I shouldn't have had that in there.
Okay, then, I, I withdraw my concern about exceeding the allowed lot coverage, but I still hold my concern about, uh, a substantial lot coverage in a very small lot.
Understood. If it's possible, I'm happy to answer any more questions before the public portion of the hearing is closed. But if it's possible now or after, um, the board has had their discussions to have a straw poll, so I could understand where the board is before actually voting, I would very much appreciate that.
Yes, of course, Attorney Rose, no problem. Um, so let's go ahead and open public comment. I don't believe we got any letters, um, regarding this item. Um, is anyone here to, is anyone here to speak to this item? Just unmute yourself and identify your name and address, um, for the record before you speak. Being none. All right, wait another second, anyone, just unmute yourself and speak if you're there. All right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment on item, uh, appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight. Wait a second. All right, ro- roll call vote, Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so that closes public comment on the item and just brings it back to the board for discussion. We haven't closed the public hearing yet. Um, does anyone have any, um, comments or discussion? Go ahead, Manny.
Well, i- 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 it's an interesting point. I agree with, with Attorney Rose that that particular provision of the bylaws do not have, does not contain a, a, a lot coverage requirement. Uh, i- i- like I said, it's, it brings us back to the general standard for special permits as to whether or not it's substantial. I- i- it's introducing a substantial detriment. But I think Paul has a point. Obviously, if we were building to the extent of building the lot, um, clearly then the, the question becomes, you're getting closer and closer, this is clearly detrimental to the neighborhood, right? And you can't have, you know, uh, uh, again, that's an extreme, a property that's consumed in essence by, by, by the buildings, by structures. But I, I, I agree, however, with Attorney Rose, that what's being proposed here, and, and I didn't focus on the numbers specifically, but I, I, I agree, it is modest. And since there's no incremental encroachment happening beyond that which makes this property to be nonconforming, I, I, I think, I mean, I'm willing to listen and be convinced from, from fellow members, but I'd be inclined to vote in favor of granting the special.
Aaron or Mark?
I, I'm in favor with, with everything that Manny just said, and, um, I have nothing else to add.
Um, I agree, uh, a little bit with Paul in that it is, it is a lot on the lot, but I think these lots are tight. I mean, the house next door has a pool. Uh, uh, they're honestly more, more, I don't know, they're loud, they're, you, you know what pools are like. I mean, nobody here can disagree that pools are not loud and boisterous and things like that. So I don't, I don't think this is a question of detrimental to the particular butters. And probably anybody else, you know, there's a wooded area, there's probably, probably no real consequence. They're not going up, which is usually our major issue. You know, we see people putting two and a half stories on, that is not what this is, I, I think it's pretty reasonable. So I would be more-
Paul, any further comments from you or?
No, I, I'm, um, I think, uh, Manny summarized, uh, summarized it eloquently as he usually does. Um, I was only concerned because the twenty percent was brought up, and in fact, it, it crossed the line there. I think it is cramming a lot into, into a lot. Uh, but I also agree that, uh, with the rest of the board that it's, um, it appears to be okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement too. Again, Manny, I think you summarized it very well. Attorney Rose, I, I'm sure you regret putting that number on-
I totally do.
Does someone want to make findings?
Manny, go for it.
I'll do it. All right. Um, this is on,
one second, I'm trying to find a staff report. I can't find it, so I'll do it off the notice. This is on appeal number twenty twenty-three dash forty-eight. Michael M. Barbara Girardi have applied for special permits in accordance with section two forty ninety-two B. Nonconforming buildings or structures used as single-family residences. Applicants seek to alter and expand a pre-existing nonconforming structure by constructing an attached garage, partially enclose and expand an existing rear-facing deck into construct an addition. Subject property is located at twenty Indian Hill Road in Barnstable, as shown on Assessor's map, three, three, six, parcel zero, six, zero. I find that the application falls within a category that's specifically accepted in the ordinance for grant of special permit. And that's the section referenced above, two forty ninety-two B allows for the alteration of a nonconforming dwelling, a nonconforming lot. And also find that site plan review is not required for a single-family residential dwellings or alterations thereto. And based on the evidence, I find that since the proposed additions do not result in any incremental encroachment, but rather within the existing setbacks which makes this property nonconforming. And also in light of a budding nearby properties in the area, that the proposed additions would not represent a substantial detriment to the public or to the neighborhood. Those would be my findings.
Thank you, Manny. Anna, just administratively, do we need to close the public hearing first?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on three dash zero four eight. I see a second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So public hearings closed, and Manny has presented findings. We need a second on his findings and then a roll call vote.
Second on the findings, Mark.
All right, roll call vote on approving the findings as read into the record. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
Favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. And so Manny, you have some conditions?
Yep.
And Attorney Rose, did you guys review those conditions?
Did review those conditions, and they are acceptable there.
So we're specifically referring to conditions one through five as listed in the staff report, and you've indicated you're okay with those?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote on the conditions referenced in the staff report on appeal number twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pinnard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. So Attorney Rose, you have your special permit. Thank you for your time and talking us through all that. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, next up, we have appeal number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three. Potter Avenue Realty LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash ninety-four A. Change of a nonconforming use to another nonconforming use. The applicant seeks to convert the existing office space that has been used as a medical slash therapy business into five residential apartments, one two-bedroom apartment and four one-bedroom apartments. The building is, the building also contains two rental storage units, and those will remain. The subject property is located at eleven Potter Avenue, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's map, three zero eight as parcel one five zero. The property is located in Residence B, R B Zoning District. I'm going to recuse myself from this, which I believe, Paul, if you're okay running that, I will pass it to you to assign members and take the hearing. Oh, you're muted, Paul.
Yeah, let me bring it up. Okay, this, this has to do with appeal number twenty twenty-four dash oh three Potter Avenue Realty LLC. Potter Avenue Realty LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash ninety-four A. Change of a nonconforming use to another nonconforming use. The applicant seeks to convert the existing office space that has been used as a medical therapy business into five residential apartments. One two-bedroom apartments and four one-bedroom apartment. The building also contains two rental storage unit and the units, and those will remain. The subject property is located at eleven Potter Avenue, Hyannis, Mass, as shown on Assessor's map, three oh eight as parcel one fifty. The property is located in Residence B, R B Zoning District. Assigned to this will be uh, okay, you're gonna have to help me out because I don't see who's on here other than Aaron. Manny, are you there?
I am.
Okay, Denise.
Paul, why don't you, why don't you leave me out of this one, just because I'm somewhat involved in this type of business? So I think we have enough to.
Do we have five?
I believe we do, right? We, do we?
Yes.
So Larry Horowitz, Manny, Denise, Paul, myself.
Okay, those, that's it. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with Zoom, so I don't know who's on the call.
Okay, well, so Paul, again, the members inside would be Larry Horowitz, Aaron Webb, Paul Pinnard, Denise Johnson, Manny Alves.
Right, Manny, Larry, Denise, and Aaron and myself.
Yep.
Right.
Oh.
So Mark, are you jumping off or you're just not gonna?
You know what, I probably should just recuse at this point. It's easier. I'll jump back on.
Okay, is there, is this Attorney Law or who's?
Yes, it's David Law, or if you let me, I can, I can start. I know you're having trouble with your Zoom, Paul, so do you want me to jump right in?
Yep, you're up.
Okay, well, first of all, I don't know if you can tell where I'm standing. I'm literally outside in the hallway outside the town manager's office. I'm covering two matters tonight. So I have my laptop, just so if you hear some people coming out of the school committee meeting, I want to apologize in advance. And I appreciate my client, Chuck Villa, is the principal of the LLC. We have a great team here. We have Rick Finuccio. We have Tim Sawyer and Matt Eddy as the design professionals. You know, this is a, a property where about twenty years ago, it was own business. And it operated as initially Cape Cod Healthcare had offices in there that provided mental health and other things. And I know Rick has some
Excuse me, would you like me to share my screen?
Yeah, would you, please?
Yeah. And it looks like I need to be able to.
You are all set. You can share your screen now.
All righty.
And I'll, I'll keep talking while he's doing that because you know I never stop talking. So here is the, the structure and what the structure has operated in, it has in the back, you'll see two storage units. And it's a mixed-use property, office and storage. And as you're showing there, the storage, nothing's going to contain, nothing's going to change with the storage units. Those are going to remain the same. And what the special permit in their two forty ninety-four A is essentially, you know, one nonconforming use to another. And they lay out criterias A through E where that's appropriate. And in this particular, the history of the property is very important. It operated initially as a one large, it was therapy, but it was very, it was, I would categorize it medical office use with a heavy, very heavy usage in that business where you have not only individuals being treated, but you know, individuals waiting to be treated. So there was a heavy traffic load, and there remains a heavy traffic load with the office use. In that, with that particular use, there, I think there was up to twelve employees. And there were five or six treatment rooms at a time, so it was a very heavily utilized facility. Then the facility went on to become three separate units. Then again, there was some healthcare, there was a massage therapist. I mean, when I say healthcare, therapy care. And the massage therapist, which also, again, someone's getting a massage, not the entire hour, but fifteen minutes before. Someone's waiting for the room for the next appointment. So you had a heavy usage, and we submitted with the materials a traffic study report. Because on the history of this project, we went through site plan review, and it was approved and then conditionally approved. It was initially conditionally approved on the basis that the building commission of Brian Florence was satisfied that what we're requesting would be in compliance with the, you know, with the zoning issues or and I had numerous conversations, Mr. Florence forwarded him correspondence where I addressed the particular issues. And if you, we can go through them one by one, but essentially the statute itself almost conforms with this special permit requirements. It's really looking to see that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood, but it lays it out a little bit more specifically as far as use, parking, and the like. And I believe that the engineer report, I'm not going to get into detail. I know you've all read that. Lays that out very clearly that the prior use was far more active, which would be deemed detrimental than the present use. Now, any issues as far as water usage or sewer aren't really in play because this is on town sewer. And the parking, there's more than enough parking under zoning. And in reality, for the particular use with respect to the back lot and the front portions. What the proposal is, I probably should mention that, are five apartments, five residential apartments, four of which would be one bedroom and two of which, I mean, I'm sorry, four of which would be one bedroom and one would be a two-bedroom. The and keep in mind that this is a residential neighborhood. And that the, there also is a multifamily unit, right? I think it's diagonally across or could be straight across, but certainly in the very close vicinity, there's another multifamily unit. And if you look at the plans, we're not looking to change, you know, this is really an interior use issue. And we all know that, you know, the desperate need for housing in Barnstable at the moment. And these offer, you know, you know, fairly, very nice, but you know, but relatively modest in one bedrooms and a two-bedroom. So with respect to the individual criteria, I, I think that there's because this is a residential neighborhood, and though this is multifamily, it's still residential. So the uses, the time of use, the comings and goings of the people in this particular unit. Common sense is it'll be consistent with the neighborhood because people come and, you know, people, you know, people come and go as they come and go. No one knows, you know, who, you know, what hours they do, but generally renters are no different than owners or whatever. And the, you, the prior use of a heavy, heavy office type use, you know, as per the traffic report, you know, is substantially greater than, and what was there. And again, I can go through the, you know, in that report also deals with, you know, Matt Eddy's plan shows the parking, but the report also deals with the prior parking as opposed to, you know, the present requirements. And not just requirements, but reality are, you know, you know, is in play here. I can keep on going and going and go through the plans. I would actually, Matt, can you put up the, the elevations, or the, the internal? The internal, there we go, I'm sorry, yeah, I mean, that, if you look at the, you know, the elevations and how it lays out and the access points, again, very you know, conservative approach and very in keeping with the neighborhood. And I suggest to you that under the provisions of two forty ninety-four A, the nonconforming office use is more detrimental to the neighborhood than the proposed nonconforming multifamily use. I'm not addressing the storage because it's not changing. That is pre-existing, a pre-existing nonconforming, and that is intended to remain. We, you know, right now, you know, it's just some, you know, some businesses, I believe the applicant's daughter rents one of them. You know, maintains some, she has a restaurant, puts chairs and other items in there, so it's not used that often. People come to storage units probably less than once a week. I don't know the exact, I never actually asked the actual usage, but I don't think it's overly used. People store things away and when they need them or the change of season or whatever. They come and use them. I know I have one facility for, for my business, and I probably go there once every couple of months if that. So that being said, I'm going to leave it to leave it to the board and, you know, Matt or Rick, if there are any design issues or issues with the lot, please feel free to jump in or I'll try to answer the questions.
Before we go to public comment, I want to ask, does the board have any questions?
I do, Paul.
Please.
Attorney Law, can you just walk us through the various problems of ninety-four A and give us your answer? Because we're required to make specific findings here. And if you go
Certainly, under
nine, nine, two forty ninety.
Under A, we go through A through E?
Yep, one, two, A through E, start with one.
Okay.
The applicants receive necessary approvals from the Board of Health. Has that happened?
There aren't any required.
You're converting to I'm sorry?
It's town sewer. There's no Board of Health issues.
Okay.
Wait, wait a minute. The Board of Health is more than just a sewer.
I could. I would just say that yes, we have received the well, if I could, we've received the approvals through site plan review from all of the departments which
Okay, thank you, Matthew.
including health. Building, engineering, et cetera.
Good point, Matt. We went through site plan review, and Board of Health indicated that there were no issues.
All right, so if you could just go right there, because this is actually, I was looking to find these in the staff report. But as I read ninety-four, these are specific requirements that we need to determine that they have been met. So you say you got Board of Health approval to site plan review.
Well, the Board of Health indicated that no approvals were required, and there were no issues with the Board of Health with this particular project through site plan review.
So if you could just go right down the list then, two, eight.
Okay. Okay, A requires no more parking than the previous use. We directed that at, through the you know, through the traffic study and through Matt Eddy's analysis under zoning. The parking requirements of the prior office use were greater than the parking requirements of the multifamily use. B does not generate more traffic. I just have to put my glasses on, I'm sorry. I'm almost sixty. There we go. That makes it a lot easier. Does not generate more traffic than the previous use as measured by the Institute of Transportation Engineering trips. Again, we submitted that app document via VHB, which indicates that it does not, it actually uses less trips. And that is in the record and the apply the Institute of Transportation under engineering trip handbook guidelines in that analysis. Does not result in an increase of onsite and offsite noise, dust and odors. It's residential use. It does not, there's no indication of any dust or odors or noise that would be increased. And I would suggest to you that the use, the much heavier use of people coming and going in an office setting would be noisier. I guess, I don't think the cars, it's asphalt, they're not really producing any dust, so I think that would be neutral. And again, that would apply again towards the, the fact that the use itself is, is less cumbersome or less active than the present pre-existing use. D, does not result in increase in the hours of operation or in the number of tenants or employees. We discussed that previously. I think that also applies to a business-to-business use, and I had conversations with Mr. Florence about that because there are no employees, but the, with respect to the, the prior The um, the prior use had the, uh, you know, uh, ten or, uh, so. I think it was actually up to twelve employees at one time and then you had patients in the property. Uh, as many as eight to ten in the property at any given time, um, the. Uh, for one bedrooms and one two-bedroom does not equal that amount on average based upon. Um. Our own, you know, analysis and again, would be less detrimental and less um cumbersome.
Uh, how, how, sorry to interrupt, but how do you address the hours of operation issue? Obviously, people will be living there.
Well, again, we talked about that, cause that is really drafted towards a commercial use to a commercial use. This is a, you know, this is a residential use and it's in keeping with the. Uh, community and that's where I tried to get into it before, or I said that residential uses would be consistent with the residential uses in the neighborhood, I don't know. I don't know any given tenant when they wake up in the morning or go to bed, but I can't imagine. You know, in, if you took it as a large um group. Uh, that it would be consistent, yeah, could there be one person who's. Up more active than other or not move in or do this or that, I don't know and nobody knows. So I think that the way that that guideline was drafted was really situated towards a, a business-to-business use. And now we're trying to apply it to a multifamily use, so it's really trying to fit the square peg in a round hole. Um, but I, you know, I would, I would say that as to the neighborhood, clearly it is completely consistent because it's a residential neighborhood, people. You know, I'm, I'm sure that the, the five units. You know, have the similar habits to the five homes near next door, I'm source. You know, or if you took a larger uh sample, you know, if you took it, you know, th- these units would be no different than, than the community. You know, in the neighborhood or the block or whatever, I, I, it's, it's hard to apply that, but I, I think.
Attorney Lawler, let me, I wanna, uh, uh, comment on what Manny is asking here. First of all, the Board of Health did reply on the site planner view that you needed screening for the trash. So that's a condition that they placed on there. The planning department did reply and said that if you don't uh conform to ninety-four A one or ninety-four A two. You must apply for use variance. And so the issue that Manny raises in terms of ninety-four A two D. Is critical here, I think, cause it says. The proposed non-conforming use does not re- result in an increase in the hours of operation. Or the number of tenants or employees.
Okay, what, what, I addressed that with attorney Florence and he determined that I did not need to apply for a use variance. Because of that, that we did comply with that portion of it, that's when I, I previously mentioned that there was a conditional approval. With the building department and that's what I was referencing.
Well, it's not, not his to say, the planning department is the one that would. Uh, propose and in fact did propose that if you cannot. If you, the site planner view report signed by Commissioner Lawrence.
Excuse me, there's a noise coming from them, again, I'm in the hallway.
Yeah, stated that if you couldn't pass ninety-four A one criteria or ninety-four A two criteria. That you should re- uh, uh, you cannot meet the requirements, then a use variance will need to be sought, that's what the planning board said. In the site plan review meeting.
I understand it and I went through that and I believe that if attorney Florence told we couldn't meet those criteria, he was going to. Indicate and, you know.
He, he didn't, that's the.
No, what I'm saying, he would indicate in the negative, but not in the positive, he would indicate.
No, it's the planning board that would, that would say that and the planning board leaves it to the zoning board. To say if you met those requirements, so Manny's questions are valid in terms of, do you meet those requirements? Specifically as it relates to ninety-four A two D.
No, and I'm, and that's why I'm trying to answer them and I think I have answered them, I think that if, when I, and it's same conversations I have. I mean, uh, Commissioner Florence with respect to the um, the language about. Hours of operation, now clearly hours of operation is not language one would generally use. With respect to a residential use, it just doesn't make sense, it's intended for a business. Of course, every home is operated all day long, but it's not language that would be. I suggest to you when this was drafted and the, and the drafters were, were be, uh, looking at this from a non-conforming business use to a non-conforming business use. That, because the language talks about that, if you read um. Uh. The, uh, you know, it talks about employees, obviously people in their home don't have employees, so that's the issue here, you know, and. And again, the prior tenant had. Fourteen or so, if you're gonna make an analysis of occupants, then the occupation is less as opposed to employees, so and customers, so it's a. You know, is language that I suggest to you was intended and drafted by the, the people who drafted the language. For purposes of looking at a business-to-business transfer with respect to um. The uh, you know, subcomponent D of um ninety-four A. Uh, um, one, and I think that that's important to point out and, you know, I, I. Went into a deep dive in that with respect to uh how that went with uh with the building commission and I'm willing to do that here again, but it's not. It, it's trying to, when you're, when you're trying to say employees and hours of operation, when you're dealing with a residential. They just don't fit, it's, it's, it's the round hole and the square peg or vice versa, so that's what I'm talking about, but. And, and if you look, if you look at the intent. Of A. One. Oh, I'm sorry, A two, A through G, uh, G. It really is, like I said before, consistent with the intent of the bylaw itself, not more detrimental, you know, not more parking. You know, not more traffic, not, um, you know, no increase in gross floor area, which there's not. Uh, we're not increasing the gross flare floor area at all. Um, no increases in non-conforming uses, we're not, we're going from two non-conforming uses to two non-conforming uses. Uh, is the same lot uh as occupied the non-conforming use on the day it became non-conforming, yes, that's the same. It's not expanded beyond the zoning districts in existence uh on the day it became.
Attorney Lawler, forgive me for interrupting you, uh, the, the, uh, uh, are we gonna have dedicated parking spaces to each of the units?
Uh, we certainly can if you wish, that's not an issue at all.
So remind me, what's the current number of parking spaces?
Um. Matt, can you jump in on that?
Yeah, there's a, there's a fourteen existing spaces and there are fourteen proposed spaces. The amount of spaces that are actually required for the residential use. Um, including guests uh per zoning is ten, so you can see there are ten spaces provided. This upper lot, if you, you know, understand that this, you know, elevation here, we have frontage on Potter and it is also the back of the lot, fronts on Dumont Street. Um, again, these spaces are just for access for that lower storage uh that exists. The lower portion structure.
Yeah, like.
Upper lot of tender base meets the requirements of the parking.
I was coming up with ten. You're saying there are fourteen, okay.
And we're, we're more than willing to label them, if you want us to do five spots for the five units or. Even, you know, and then have the other ones marked as guest spots, we're more than, more than willing to do that and designate. People their own particular spot, that's actually quite frankly can cut down on a lot of aggravation for a landlord.
Okay, no, I, I, if I was counting them, I, I. Looking at that, I see the extra four now, I, I. I was coming up with ten, that's why I had the question, proceed, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, so. I'm gonna move on from the increase in hours of operation and the number of tenants and employees and, cause I think I addressed that and then. Does not expand the gross floor area, I mentioned that quickly, but it's. You know, we're not changing the footprint, we're not changing the, you know, we're changing the, the design of the interior, but not the square footage. Um, and I'd probably suggest to you that because of internal walls and things of that nature, it's probably a little bit less. Of usable square footage, but I don't have that fact, you know, um, but that's a, I think a reasonable uh assumption. Um. Is uh, is on the same lot uh as uh by the non-conforming use, that is absolutely true. And G is absolutely true as well, is not expanded beyond the zoning district in existence on the day it became non-conforming, so. The um, you know, this all happened because the zoning district changed. Um, but, you know, that's, that happens, that's life and again, I think. That we can address adequately uh all the um criteria. Um, including one and then um. Two A through G, as I just went through. Um, it's, it, it's a less intense use, that's the bottom line. And that, and A um through G deal with not intensifying the use, parking, floor area. All those, that's really what they're at and that's the, that's why, and I, and as I said in the very beginning, the, you know, that's really the. The basis of a special permit, it's almost redundant, it's certainly more detailed. Um, but um, you know, you have, you know, but it's certainly um. Something that needs um, you know, that the, the client meets the criteria. Of those and I, and I, Paul, and I, and it is right, I, I wasn't trying to say that the building commissioner. Um, had purview over this, it's clearly the zoning board have appealed and I hope I wasn't disrespectful in that regard.
No, no, thank you, Attorney Lawler, is there anybody else from the board who would like to, uh, who has some questions? Then, uh.
I have a couple of questions, Paul.
Yeah, please, Larry.
Yeah, are any of these apartments gonna be handicapped accessible? Are they required to be handicapped accessible, you know, like one out of?
I'm gonna leave that to um. Rick, can you jump in on that?
Tim, Tim, can you?
Did we lose Rick? Are you muted, Rick?
Uh, this is Tim Sawyer, Catalyst Architects, uh, the requirement um within this number of units. Um, did not require any handicapped units.
Yeah, the answer is no, yeah, and uh, are any of the apartments available for low or uh middle income?
No, I can definitely handle that, no, that's again, I know that with only five units, we're not required to under the, under the bylaw.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, would like to open it up for public comment. Uh, before we do that, I would also like to uh acknowledge the fact that we, I believe we received two. Comments from the same person, is that right, Anna?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, one of those is extremely worrisome to me, cause I'm not sure I understand it, uh, but I, I can't pull it up here. But uh, I want to acknowledge uh that we received two from the same person. And Anna, who was that?
Uh, uh, the butter lives at fourteen Potter Ave.
Right, and they were opposed to the expansion, to the change of views.
Correct.
Okay, uh, open it up to public comment, is there uh anybody who wishes to comment from the public, please? Uh, do we have, David, do we have anybody in the queue? Alright.
Sarah's handling this um meeting.
Okay, Sarah, I'm sorry, is there anybody in the queue waiting?
I'm not sure right now, um, if there's any that wants to speak to this item, they can uh unmute themselves and speak now.
Alright, please go forward if you'd like to. Okay, hearing none, I'd like to close public comment and that has to be by uh, uh, roll call, so Denise?
In favor.
Aaron?
I'd like to comment, I'd like to comment.
Oh, please, please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, I, I hit the wrong button.
Happens all the time.
I'm much better in person. I'm Elizabeth Derry. Fourteen Potter Ave.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sixty-seven years a resident and five years an owner. And I'm really the only residential lot left. Along the border of the business district, we're getting infringed upon. And let me correct that lawyer, I've been here a lot longer than he has. He said desperate need for housing, well, that's not our problem, okay? We worked very hard in this neighborhood to rebuild it, we actually have four families. Or more, representing three to five different countries. We've rebuilt our neighborhood, but they put a safe house in it, so the kids can't play in the neighborhood. Because men actually diddle themselves in the front yard of the safe house. We don't want any more of that, alright, we do have one rooming house with no kitchen units. And it basically, the people that work at the Brazilian restaurant, fine. They all know each other, there's one kitchen, low density, what he's proposing. Is housing that is going to attract gangs, I can absolutely guarantee you. I caught an MS thirteen over my fence on the north side. Using above the Democrat headquarters, where they did their fundraising and everything, the Airbnb. He was using that, they were trafficking kids, I caught him, I went to five colleges in three countries, so I speak three languages. Uh, we're in danger here and that building with all those apartments, you're asking for trouble. We wanna know our neighbors, everybody, I know everybody here. I know the Jamaicans, the Bulgarians, the people from Ireland, the people from Chile and Peru, I know them all personally. We don't want people coming and going and let me also correct that lawyer, he totally lied. When it was an office building, it was low traffic, very low, and the reason they built that. Was to provide housing for the business they had that failed on the front corner, it didn't have enough parking. They tried to build that up three stories and I stopped it. Because they didn't have the parking, so daddy put the parking in across the street, but the business failed anyway. There was never, eh, eh, never ever any he- heavy use. Because their business decisions were incorrect, so now they're jumping on the bandwagon for high-density housing. And we don't want it, cause we have migrants now and we're in danger. They caught two black guys with huge guns behind my neighbor's house, she lives alone too. Come on. Are you kidding me? It's getting rough around here, I live alone, thank God the Jamaicans behind me, watch my back.
Uh, uh, thank you for your comments, we appreciate those and we are certainly, uh, we certainly.
So we are opposed to this plan. And how dare you after what you did in my backyard to the Jamaicans and me? That monstrosity, I sent you a picture, sir, you didn't understand it, then put your glasses on. You're welcome.
Thank, thank you for your comments, uh, there any more comments from the public, please? Okay. He, hearing, hearing, Sarah, there's nothing else that you see?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, hearing none, I'd like to uh make a motion to close public comments, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, uh, Denise?
Favor.
Aaron?
In favor.
Manny?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
And I'm in favor, so public comment is closed, I'll bring it back to the board, uh, is the discussion on the board?
I, I would like to ask the applicant, uh, what the average rental is going to be in these units.
I never ask my client, I don't know, but I mean, they're relatively modest and not.
Well, I mean, is, is your client willing to limit the number of adult occupancy since the neighbor seems to be. Um. Concerned that this might be rented to.
I think legally, I mean, you have one bedroom, I don't think you can. Certain landlord tenant laws, but I mean, one bedroom generally is one person, two at the most. Uh, two bedrooms are usually, you know, for the most part, um. Two people, maybe, maybe three at the most, a child and parents or whatever, um. I, I. I just don't want, um. You can't say one, you can't, I don't think you can legally say, like, for instance, a single person moves in and then gets married and has a spouse come in. And all of a sudden, you can't have two people.
Um. No, but I'm talking about that not to have multiple families or.
Oh, yeah, no, that's also by zoning, yeah, you know.
So one's concern is that they're, they're gonna bring in, you know, great numbers of people to that area and if you've only got five units and. Only one of them is a two-bedroom, then I, I would assume.
I believe actually there's a statute on the books about non-related people in the town, um, but yeah, I mean.
No one's enforcing it, I can tell you that.
Yeah, um, I certainly. I have to talk to my client, but um, I don't, I don't think there's any issue. Stating that, you know, of non-related people no more than. You know, uh, well, people don't get married, a lot of people don't get married nowadays, but um. Yeah, no more than. yeah, no more than, you know, excluding.
I'm not sure, uh Anna, do you worry of any uh any requirements or limitations with respect to the code and apartments or the Board of Health?
Uh, it doesn't fall under zoning. It might fall under the Board of Health as a limit to the um number of people in a in a one or two bedroom apartment.
Yes, it's certainly not my client's intent to rent this to a group of people. He I I my client's a very well-respected businessman in this community, and there, you know, that's clearly not the intent. And also, you know, he could sell it, so we have to make sure that it's protected. But um.
Okay, uh Denise, uh uh do you have more concerns or more questions?
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, certainly, I think we could agree agree to no more than related adults in the one.
Aaron? Larry? Anna?
I don't have much here. I mean, it's it's a nonconforming use being converted to a nonconforming use. It's they're not changing the footprint. They're not doing alterations to the exterior of the building. Um, doesn't feel like there's much here for us to and I'll be concerned with other than, again, we're converting business structure into housing, and the zoning has been changed to allow the use, right? So um I'm not really, I I don't have much much, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have no more questions.
I'm sorry, Larry.
I have no more questions to answer them.
All right.
Mary, Manny, were you satisfied with the uh Attorney Lawler's response to your inquiry regarding?
Yeah, I I just, uh, thank you, Attorney Lawler. I just wanted him to go s- sariatum through little us and 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 talk us through that because i- i- that is what 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 the ordinance requires, that in fact, each and one, each one of those prongs are met, and uh I'm satisfied.
In retrospect, I probably should have done that off the bat. I was just trying to.
Okay, uh, we need to, who will make findings? I know there's a volunteer out there.
His name is Paul.
Okay, let me, let me find it. Hang on here.
And you get to be employed, you have to, your punishment is making.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Chairman, I this this could be complicated because Anna, maybe I got the were there two versions of the staff report? Because one of them had ninety four B as part of the findings, not A. Was was there a second version?
No, I didn't. I only asked for ninety four A. I don't think I asked for ninety four B.
Uh, no, the um the site plan review identified ninety four A one and ninety four A two.
Yeah, it's the staff report that.
The staff report just goes over ninety four A. Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Look at paragraph three.
Well.
It it should, I think it should be ninety four B.
Okay, but the site plan was approved with conditions. Uh, site plan has been reviewed and found approvable with conditions.
And I believe those conditions were met, Paul.
Well, okay, but.
If they weren't, you would have got a letter from the building, you would have got a letter from the building commissioner, saying that they weren't met.
Well, I would like to have number three inserted, found approvable with conditions. Because absent that, I don't feel comfortable approving it uh because it did not, it only passed the site plan review with conditions, and unless those conditions are met. Um, therefore, I would like that in there. Anna, can you make sure it found approvable with conditions?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Uh, this has to do with appeal number twenty twenty four dash oh three Potter Avenue Realty LLC. Potter Avenue Realty LLC has applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash ninety four A, change of nonconforming use to another nonconforming use. I find that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. Section two forty ninety four B allows for a special permit. Two, after evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Point three, the site plan has been reviewed and filed approval with conditions in accordance with article ten or nine here and subject only to the issuance of a special permit. See letter dated January eighth, twenty twenty four. I believe that's the site plan review letter. Further, section two forty ninety four B requires the board to find that. Four, any proposed expansion of the use shall conform with the established setbacks for the zoning district in which it is located or such greatest setbacks as the zoning board of appeals may require due to the nature of the use and its impact on the neighborhood and surrounding properties. Number five, the proposed use and expansion is on the same lot as occupied by the nonconforming use on the date it became nonconforming. Number six, proposed use, new use is not expanded beyond the zoning district in existence on the date it became nonconforming. Seven, at the discretion of the zoning board of appeals, improvements may be required and want to reduce the impact of the neighborhood and surrounding properties, including what nominal to A, greater conformance of signage to the requirements of article seven. B, the addition of off-street parking and loading facilities. C, improved pedestrian safety, traffic circulation and reduction in the number and of with curb cuts. D, increase in open space of vegetated buffers and screening along joining lots and roadways. The applicant shall demonstrate the maximum possible pl- possible compliance with section two forty dash fifty three landscape requirements for parking lots subsection F, if applicable. Those are my findings with conditions.
Mr. Chair, i- if I could, I would also suggest that we note in the findings that based on evidence received the provisions of ninety four, two forty dash ninety four A appear to have been met. Because eh eh I worry that that section says the board must find that there's no more detrimental use and that the following requirements are met in this list.
Thank you. I would love that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so uh I I agree, Manny. So I would make that number eight of my findings. Uh, the board has found that section two forty dash ninety four A one and section two forty dash ninety four A two of the code of Barstville, town of Barstville, uh have been met.
Thank you.
So I need a second on those findings, please?
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call. Denise?
In favor.
Aaron? Aaron?
Sorry, in favor.
Manny?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. Uh, the conditions, because that's a conditional approval, the conditions are one through four as identified in the staff report of some date. Anna, what's the date on that?
It is uh January twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, Attorney Lawler, have you and your client reviewed those and do you uh find?
Yeah, those are accepted.
Okay. Uh, okay, so I need a voice vote on those conditions? Denise?
In favor.
Aaron?
In favor.
Manny?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. So Attorney Lawler, you have your uh special permit?
Well, thank you and congratulations, my client. He he'll build a project you're proud of, and and thank you for putting up with the all the noises. I'm literally in the hallway at Town Hall, so.
Didn't hear it, Attorney Lawler.
Okay.
Correspondence, uh.
You'll be a nice one. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Uh, Anna, we don't have any correspondence, do we?
There is one correspondence um uh tr- uh transmittal from the um the planning board preliminary subdivision. It's just a transmittal.
Uh, yes, that's right.
Referring seven Main Street.
Yeah.
Right, so it's a case evidently that we will hear, and that was a tip off to us. Uh, matter is not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Uh, Jake, do you want to take over at this point? You want me to close it out?
Bring us on, Paul.
Okay, um we are in the twelfth hour with respect to the withdrawals and uh continuances. We're just waiting for a final uh okay from uh uh Jim Kofor, the Kofor of the Planning Department, Kate uh from our legal and Jake from our board. And once that's done, I can bring it back to you successfully. We have upcoming hearings on February twenty eighth and March thirteenth and March twenty seventh, uh twenty eighth. That's a, is that in person? Anna?
That's in person.
Okay.
Yes, it's in person.
All right, uh, would like to have a joinment. Can I have a, I make a motion, will you adjourn? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, uh, uh, let's see, Denise in favor?
In favor.
Aaron?
I'm in favor, Paul.
Manny?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
I'm in favor. Is it, did I miss anybody? Jake, are you in favor?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor.
All right.
Mark's in favor.
Thank you, thank you very much.